Thank you for coming. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for February 9th, 2015. Our meeting is going to go through the roll call, the minutes, disclosures, consent agenda. We have some unfinished business. We have five public hearings, one of which is going to be withdrawn. Can I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Dean?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Spring?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Spohays?
Here.
Mr. Cange? Commissioners Ferguson, Strike, and Barker have been excused. Thank you.
Can I have the minutes for approval? Would somebody like to second that? Thank you. I have the minutes as approved for January 5th and January 12th of 2015. Next on to disclosures, Mr. Spring.
Yes. Commissioner Robinson, any disclosures?
None.
Mr. Cange?
No, sir.
Walker?
No.
The Chair?
No.
I have none. And Spohays?
No, sir.
Next, we have consent agenda. Mr. Spohays?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda unless anyone would like to pull any items?
That's true. May I correct myself?
Yes.
Madam Chair. I did, I forgot, during the disclosures, I forgot that I was not at the meeting on January 9th where the case 2014-0156 was heard and therefore cannot vote on the resolution.
And actually, I need to disclose as well that I was not at the meeting on January 9th, the same following Mr. Spring.
Did you either want to, you did listen to the audio, both of you, or?
I did listen to the conditional use of the gas station, but I did not listen to the audio for the resolution of the adult daycare center.
And Mr. Spohays?
Same. I listened to the audio for the gas station, but not the resolution.
Okay. So, since we only have then four people tonight, we will not be able to approve that resolution, correct? Thank you. So, resolution for approval then was the adult daycare facility, and that's the one that we will not be able to approve tonight, correct? And at this time then, we do need to move on to the unfinished business, which is case E1, which is 2014-0173 Cook Inlet Marketing Group.
Madam Chair? May I? Case 2014-0196, White Harbor Homes?
Yes. Thank you very much for withdrawing. And let's have a motion on that. We have a second. And Mr. Spohays second in that. So, if you are here for the Widener Apartment Homes case, we will not be hearing that. That case has been withdrawn by Widener. Thank you. And on back to the case 2014-0173, since Mr. Spohays and Mr. Spring have both heard the case and listened to the tapes, we can go ahead and, how would the Commission like to proceed on this? We did have some new information given to us regarding the use of the warehouse space in the back of the building. Has everybody read the information that we were given regarding the use of the back half of the building? Mr. Cange?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm still not clear, maybe staff can talk about this a little bit, because I'm still not clear from the petitioner's memo whether or not they will be using this for food distribution to other locations, which is not allowed under the B-1A neighborhood district plan.
Staff, can you please help us?
Yes, I can. Through the Chair, Mr. Cange. I think it's the intention or desire of Cook Inlet Marketing Group to make sandwiches in the warehouse for sale and distribution to their other Chevron stores, their other convenience stores in Anchorage. However, as memo from staff indicated, that is not permitted in that B-1A zoning district.
So, when the conditional use permit resolution comes through, there'll be a note stating that in that?
Yes. I can write it to make a note that it's not allowed.
Okay. Thank you. I have no other questions, Madam Chair.
Mr. Spring?
Question before we vote on anything. You have identified the site plans that are part of the conditions of approval in the memo.
Uh huh.
Does the site plan that's identified in the condition include the warehouse that's not allowed?
It's not so much that the warehouse is not allowed, it's the use, the processing and making and distribution of the sandwiches. They're allowed to make sandwiches for sale in that particular store, but they're not allowed to make them and distribute them to other Chevron stores.
So, through the Chair, then it's susceptible to show the 1,709 square foot warehouse space in the site plan?
Yes.
It's just be a matter of if they violate the code, then zoning enforcement will come and tell them not to make sandwiches for distribution, and so no need to change it?
That's correct.
Mr. Robinson?
Thank you. I have two questions for staff. The first is, could you remind me again the issue of the south property and where we were placing, recommending the placement of the fence? And describe to me what exactly is there? I think there's 25 feet of existing trees, but somehow there's something that talks about at a 10-foot point putting in a fence. So, I'm trying to figure out, you know, how exactly where the fence is relative to that existing vegetation, and what happens if that existing vegetation, you know, falls to a level that's sort of below a buffer landscape?
That fence, now that we're certain that it's not a 10-foot buffer, and it's in fact going to be a 25-foot buffer, then the fence would be placed at that 25-foot buffer. As to if the landscaping is not sufficient, then they would need to augment it. Once the, our enforcement goes out to look at the site, if in fact after they've put in the landscaping, it still looks thin, then they will have to augment it with additional landscaping. That would then come back to the planning department, we would look at it and approve it. And then they would add it, and then the inspector would go out again to look at it.
So, are you looking for an amendment to the recommendation that that fence be placed at the 10-foot buffer landscape line?
Well, it would have to be at the 25-foot buffer line.
So, that's a yes, you'd look for a?
A change to that, yes.
Okay, I have a, Madam Chair, I have a second issue, if I may. One of the conditions of, you know, conditional use is, has to do with, project will not have a permanent negative impact on the items listed below substantially greater than the anticipated form of permitted development. Number three is noise, air, water, or other forms of environmental pollution. The site is an active, open, and contaminated site, I believe, according to the ADC. Is that correct?
Yes, I believe that was the statement.
And, you know, it's a pretty extensive list of actions. I mean, it does appear that there've been, you know, ongoing corrective act, action of the site, I think since the early 2000s. I find it, you know, interesting. I mean, it is allowable to redevelop a contaminated site, but somehow I'm trying to sort of wrestle with this notion that we're re permitting a gas station at a location that is contaminated and from a former gas station, and that contamination has migrated off-site. And so, you know, conceivably, you know, we're permitting a project that would be a, you know, a viable, revenue profitable project, and I just wonder if the cleanup that is going on is, you know, sort of in recognition of, you know, of this fact? And how you as staff have made a, you know, do you see any connection between the fact that it's already an existing contaminated site from a gas station and the fact that we're making the statement that it won't have any additional impacts?
Yeah, that's, I mean, we just discovered that at the last minute through questioning by the Commission. You know, it's, I'm assuming that it's DEC that is monitoring it, and that's who they're going through to make sure that it's going to be cleaned up. As to what other effects it's had, has it affected the groundwater? I mean, I, all we can do is guess on that. We have no information regarding that.
Well, we do, we actually do, if I may. We have a lot of information. It's on the public website, and it's pretty well documented. I think, you know, I just was wondering if, you know, I'm trying to flush out and understand, again, the fact that it's a problem. We know there's open sites. We know we're allowed to develop open sites. At the same time, you know, negotiations are made based on what's reasonable for, you know, the contaminating party. I don't quite know if this is the same party or a different party. I know that's a former Chevron station. I think there is sort of a relationship of this group to Chevron. So, I'm not exactly sure if it's one in the same group, if it's a different group. You know, but it strikes me that if there's, if there's been a limit placed on how much they need to do to remedy the situation, because it was not financially feasible, given that it was an abandoned site, but now we're permitting a site that's going to generate revenue. I just wonder if there's not a connection to require them to clean up their old mess before they, you know, before they start anew? And I, you know, if you're not prepared, I don't know, I know we've closed the public hearing, but I'm not comfortable, we are not ADC, yet clearly there is a condition that has us look at environmental issues, and there is an environmental issue on this site. So, I need help flushing out this issue to feel comfortable approving this case.
Yes, we will recommend perhaps postponing this until we get more information about exactly what's going on in terms of that cleanup and a timeline for when they think that they might have it cleaned up. Also, the petitioner's representative is here tonight, and I think even though the hearing has been closed, I think if there's new information presented, then the petitioner has roughly about five minutes to speak to the Commission if the Commission desires.
If I may, I mean, I think it's very appropriate. Might as well get the information from the source here if you're amenable to it.
Thank you. Please state your name and spell your first and last name for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Ellis, S-T-E-P-H-E-N, Ellis, E-L-L-I-S. On this contamination issue, my best recollection is that I did discuss this a bit when I was last before the Commission. The Chevron is the, what they call the responsible party for cleaning up this site. And when we bought the property, we being Cook Inlet Marketing Group, we received an identity agreement from Chevron, so that Chevron remains solely responsible for cleaning up this site. It will be unaffected by the fact that we are operating a new gasoline service station there, a convenience store. We bought in 2004 eight stores from Chevron, and I would say approximately half of them were contaminated at that time, and there has been ongoing remediation continuing at all of those sites. It takes quite a long time to complete the remediation process, but, so I don't see any inconsistency between the remediation going on at this property and our operating a new convenience store on the property. And I believe that was the consensus or holding, if you will, of this Commission when I was last before it. I believe the Chairman said he didn't see any connection between the two. Certainly, I do not. I would also like to comment on this issue of, I'm a little troubled by the conclusory nature that staff and the Commission have concluded that a distribution of sandwiches is not allowed there based on the fact that the term distribution appears as an industrial, as a definition of industrial use. I don't?
I'm sorry, sir. We really can't discuss the sandwich issue. We're really asking about the DEC issue.
Okay, sorry.
So, let's keep it on that particular track so that?
That's fine.
We can get those questions answered, such as what is the remediation work consisting of at this time?
It, well, it basically consists, the contractor that Chevron has retained files a report with the ADC every six months, and I get a copy of the report, and ADC signs off on that, and then it goes forward. Basically, the program consists of monitoring the, monitoring wells and observing that the contamination level does subside over time. I'm not aware that there's anything in the record that indicates that there's any contamination that's off-site, but I have to say I don't know that for a fact, but I don't believe there's any evidence that supports that conclusion. I'm not aware of any.
Well, if I, I mean, I, I just, there has been in the past, whether there still is, I don't know, but there clearly has been. I'm just a little, little troubled at the disconnect here, where, you know, while you have a different owner, you know, and I might say that perhaps one difference here is that you're coming in for a new conditional use and not operating the same gas station. And so, there is ground disturbance here. There's a lot, it's a lot different operation than taking over an existing gas station that has contamination. You are before us with a new application. But number two, I'm a little bit troubled at the lack of knowledge of what we have when one of the real basic premises of a conditional use is examining the environmental impact. And so, by you, I understand, I believe me, I understand, I work in the field, I understand that you can have a legal separation from the issue. That said, we'd be interested, at least I would be interested, in knowing what the status of that is before we approve a new use that has the potential for additional environmental contamination, whether it's in the process of disturbing the old contamination when you build it, or, you know, through the long-term use of the site. So, I appreciate your response, but, you know, respectfully disagree with your conclusion.
Commissioner Spring?
Well, I guess if we're gonna, if somebody's gonna propose a continuation or whatever and ask for more information, I would like to know what kind of active remediation's currently under, the site's undergoing. There are certain things, I don't know a lot about remediation, but I know volatile organic compounds can be extracted with sinking some type of well or something into the ground and volatilizing them, or something like that. I'm assuming there's some active remediation effort happening.
That's right, there is.
But you don't have any information about it. You just say that, all I heard you say was they monitor it.
That's right.
But there's other things happening, right? Active remediation occurring now?
I think it's simply a matter of time that the site is contained, so contamination is not going off the property, and so long as it's contained, ADC is not quite so concerned in having the problem immediately resolved, and they're content to?
So, there's no active remediation happening?
I'm just not sufficiently familiar to really comment on that.
That's fine. Then, if we do postpone it and hear it again, I'd like to have that information brought to us then.
We can do that.
Commissioner Cange?
Thank you. Through the Chair, to staff, I think it would help to have the record of decision from the ADC, at least for my part, know, you know, where the hydrocarbons or whatever it is, where the levels are, are they above ADC standards or below? I know natural attenuation is a form of remediation, and just, they say we're gonna keep an eye on things through groundwater monitoring, and so, as Commissioner Robinson, I kind of tend to side with him, I'd like to know a little bit more about the status, or at least the levels of hydrocarbons in the ground.
Thank you. Staff, can you help us with that and provide us with the DEC report? Should the DEC come? How far should we ask for DEC's help?
Yes, I'll look into it and see what I can find out, and probably working with Mr. Ellis and see if we can get a timeline also when they think this remediation work may be complete.
Commissioner Robinson, do we have a motion from you?
Do you? I have a motion to postpone. I guess the public hearing's closed, so it, I guess we can just say until a later date as to when you have the information. I would add that in, as part of that motion, you know, again, the information that I see is clearly there was an air sparging system on the site, so there was active remediation. Whether that's still going on or not would be something I'd want to know, because if you're gonna disturb the ground in the location of where that system is, I want to know, are we intending to have it still operate? Are we intending to not have it still operate? And frankly, I'd really specifically want to know, with the plans that Chevron has, or this group has in terms of building a site, where are they in the ground related to the contamination, and what is DEC's, you know, I think, sense as to whether that will cause additional releases off property? Because that's really primarily what we're concerned with as it relates to this conditional use permit.
Commissioner Robinson, would you like to postpone or continue it?
Is it the motion to continue? Thank you. Clarify, motion to continue.
Can I get a second for that? Thank you, Mr. Cange. So, we are going to go ahead and motion for continuation, correct? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Any objections at this point? No objections, so we will, we have voted for continuation. Thank you. Our next case tonight is going to be case 2014-0218. This is the CIP plan from the Anchorage School District. This is not a public hearing, but the procedure by which the public may speak to the Commission at its meetings is the following. One, after the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the Chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established by the Commission rules of procedure. A, petitioner's, including all of his or her representatives, 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. B, will be the representatives of groups, that's community councils, PTAs, et cetera, will get five minutes. Individuals will get three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked to questions by the Commission. May only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the Commission. Four, an individual may have appeal rights relating to any action the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except Commission recommendations to the Assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the Clerk's Office within 20 days after the approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the Commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of the filing. Any individual may request written findings from any Commission decision within seven days. Would Anchorage School District's representative like to come forward, or should we hear the staff presentation first? Staff, are you going to give a presentation, or should we go right to the Anchorage School District?
I was just going to speak a little bit to the memo that I gave to you in your packet for February 9th.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is Christine Benel. I'm a senior planner in the long-range planning section. The Anchorage School District has a six-year capital improvement planning process, and it's reviewed annually by both the Planning and Zoning Commission and by the Assembly. This is the opportunity for the school district to share their vision with you for the next six years, and specifically for the next year. The draft, a preliminary draft CIP, Capital Improvement Program, was transmitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 23rd, and you held a discussion, work session, with the school district staff last Monday night on the 2nd, and now this is the final public comment time to hear from the school district. We did transmit to you this evening, and I apologize it wasn't earlier, but we have a cutoff date of Friday at 1:00, some additional information that the school district gave to us this afternoon, and that speaks a little bit to projects, what the bid cost is, and then the actual cost, and some of the design costs for some of the projects that we have. So, you should have that before you. Your process tonight is you'll receive the second presentation from school district staff, and then hold a little bit of a discussion, and then we're recommending that you recommend approval onto the Assembly for the CIP.
At that time, can we make recommendations to the school district for what we feel about the CIP?
Yes, you can. They have not taken the CIP yet to their board, and so it still is available to receive comment from you, and that's new this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We don't have any additional information to present to you today. We're here to answer your questions and respond to any comments or suggestions that you might have.
Commissioner Cange?
Thank you. Through the Chair, Mr. Abbott. I think last week we had just a couple edits and recommendations with those captured in the document that we'll recommend to the Assembly.
I think we discussed sort of conceptual issues about the legislative amendments or potential legislatively funded projects. We are planning to present those in the manner that you all saw them last week.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Yes, I think your report's very well done, and it looks like it's, you know, acceptable to me, and I would make a recommendation in favor of it. I would like, though, to comment on the southwest area of town a bit. I don't have, I'm not sure, there won't be any major recommendation coming out of me on that, but especially considering that I think the overall growth rate of the city is gonna be pretty flat here in the next six years. I mean, I'm not sure, did you have a projection on the overall growth of the city incorporated in your CIP?
We have student growth rates. We don't have an overall population growth rate, and our student population estimate over six years is flat to within half a percent of student population.
That's good. I mean, I think that's a very accurate way I think of doing a projection, but there is another component, which is immigration from outside the system, which sometimes it's good to take in effect into account, but in this case, I think, you know, my opinion is that based on everything I'm reading and the budget problems, that there's not gonna be any, and there hasn't been any immigration for a while. But the southwest area is kind of interesting, because it has some active subdivisions there that are going to be built out within so many years. I don't know exactly how many, maybe five years or whatever. And there's a school site, of course, in that subdivision in the pits, the Sand Lake pits, they used to call it. So, there might be some shifting of population from one part of the city to another. I'm assuming, unless everything goes to hell, that it will be built out eventually, because it is, you know, one of the few areas of single-family housing available in this town. So, I know, it doesn't sound like you really took that into account, and that's okay, but I think it bears maybe monitoring it in the future, maybe even taking some of the building permits from the city, maybe to supplement the cohort survival type of calculations you do, to see if there's a trend there that might be accelerating in the future. And that area, according to your statistics, show, you know, Kincaid and Bayshore and Sand Lake, we talked about having the five portables. They're all pretty much at capacity or above capacity, especially Kincaid. And there's another factor in there too, I think, that And there's another factor in there, too, I think, that involves maybe building neighborhoods. And those districts, those elementary school boundaries in that area are so large, there's no neighborhood schools there that I could see. I mean, you have to walk to a school in that area is very difficult, because of the length and breadth of the school boundaries there. So I guess if we're building communities, you know, and neighborhoods, that maybe we should be thinking about building a new school in that area, once, or at least to coincide maybe with the buildout of the Sand Lake pits, and complete that neighborhood, so that people, kids can walk to their school, instead of really, at this point, they have to drive everywhere to go to any school, just go to Sand Lake. Maybe Sand Lake's a little bit closer, maybe that's possible. Kincaid's pretty far. Bayshore is not possible. But I think my recommendation would be to maybe consider that a little bit more closely in the future, not only in terms of the capacity of the nearby schools, but in terms of the community building that needs to be done in that area.
Thank you. We intend to monitor it. We agree that is the single greatest concentration of at or above attendance elementary schools, and the middle school there is also pretty full. It's likely that that would be the next school that the district would build. The growth in the Powder Ridge, Powder Reserve area is, has tapered off. It's still occurring, but that's, we have another school site in that part of the world as well. At this point, the district doesn't recommend new construction, although we recognize, and the site was acquired, so that when the Kincaid Estates area does build out, we'll be in a position to take advantage of that.
Just to follow up real quickly, I agree with you about the Powder Reserve, too. It's never seems to be growing very fast, although we did, this commission did receive two subdivisions within the last year, or maybe year and a half or two years in that area. Not huge subdivisions, but there's some activity that's starting up there, and we can see that from the commission's point of view. But I agree, it's probably not accelerating to agree that it needs to be, especially considering that schools there seem to be well under capacity for the most part.
They are. And that neighborhood appears, according to developers in that part of the world, to be more tied to military growth or swings in the military population, which appears to be somewhat uncertain at this point. So, whereas the Sand Lake area appears to be less dependent on any one type of industrial population relocation.
Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you, to the Chair. Mike, can you remind me, no new schools within the scope of this, this plan, right? Any, any major redos of facilities, and if so, which ones?
Yes, there'll be no new construction, no significant expansions either. By significant, I mean more than, say, 100 kids. And off the top of my head, I'm not aware of any, of even those that would be taking place. The four schools that are planned for renewal in year one, which is the, the schools that would be funded by the school bond in eight weeks, are Gladys Wood, Turnigan, Mountain View, and Rabbit Creek. Year two would be, the major renewal would be Central Middle School. Year three would be Greening and Inlet View. And then it becomes a little less specific. Year four would be some investment in the West Romig project and Wonder Park, Whaley and Mount I, and then additional investment in West Romig in year five as well. And I believe that those are the first five years of the CIP, where, and those would be the schools that would be significantly renewed, where we'd be dealing more than just with roofs, or boilers, or individual systems, but instead would be touching the majority of the structure.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments from the commission? Commissioner Cange?
Sorry, to the Chair, just one more thing that we kind of discussed last week, is potentially having one of the, one of the commissioners sitting on your, I forgot what committee you called it, I apologize.
Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, yeah. No, I think if the commission has a recommendation for a member, I would be glad to carry that to the superintendent.
Okay. I don't know if we're going to come up with that here tonight, but we might discuss that later, but I think that would be...
We welcome that.
That would be one of my recommendations as we approve this, send it on up to...
Commissioner Cange, are you volunteering?
Me? No. I'm just...
Thank you. I do have a question. You did give us this sheet today, and I was reading through it, just trying to understand your annotations. On the back page, let's pick on the last school there, was Mirror Lake, and it was CIP year was 2012, 2013. The bond, it looks like, was $900,000. The actuals to date, meaning all of the construction design costs totaled only $546,102, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then the next column is $379,418 for construction. So the difference between those is the cost for design. Is that what I'm reading, understanding? Okay.
No, no, the design expense is the next column over. So for Mirror Lake, it's $39,710.
Okay, so then I'm still not coming up to $546,000. What's the...
That's correct. There'd be other costs as well. There'd be the project management expense. There'd be a variety of other miscellaneous costs associated with that as well.
Okay, because down at the bottom, it does say, "Planning, bidding assistance, and construction administrative services." Is that what you're referring to?
No. Oh, yes. That's the stuff that's not included in the design expense.
Okay, great. And so percentage of construction, I'm not totally sure what you mean by that. It says 10.47?
Sorry, that's the percentage of the construction cost that the design, that the design expense represents. So in the case of that project, the design expense was 10.5% of the construction cost.
Okay, okay, great. Well, thanks very much for getting that together for us. It's nice to have a better feel for exactly what the costs are, where the monies go. Good to see that that one actually was under the bond. So now that it's under the bond, what happens to that money?
The money would then be available for use for another district, qualifying district capital improvement. In the case of the CTE projects, like the one at Mirror Lake, those funds have not been reallocated as of this time. I believe it is the board's intent to consider other CTE projects in the district for those project balances that are remaining.
Thank you. Before we close, is there any other comments that the commissioners would like to make regarding the CIP? So at this time, from what I understand, there is no vote. This is just advisory information for us to use, from what I understand, correct, staff? Okay, so do you have what you need from us?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. This has been very helpful.
Thank you.
We very much enjoyed this, sort of the adjustment and the process this year.
Thank you very much for your time. Our next case tonight for public hearings, that first one, again, was withdrawn, that was case 2014-0196. So our second case tonight is 2014-0186. This is the MOA Current Planning Section and Ordinance Amending Title 21, Common Procedures Section. So I would imagine we need to have a report from staff.
Madam Chair, I'm Jerry Weaver. Erica's out ill this evening, so I'm pitching in for her. This is a carryover, so you've had, you know, basically a presentation from staff before, but these are a variety of amendments that we found throughout the past six to nine months that we believe need to be cleaned up in conjunction with the cases that have processed, or issues that have been brought forward by development community. This is the first of another two or three batches of amendments that you will see. Jennifer Johnson's heading up the Assembly Title 21 Subcommittee. We're meeting Thursday with them to finalize some additional ordinance amendments that will be coming to you shortly about multifamily residential design standards and other procedures in the code that have been brought to our attention that need better clarity. So I could speak to each one of these issues, if the commissioners have questions or concerns about any particular section, and I'd be happy to do that.
Please go through each one. Thank you.
Please go through each one?
Yes, please.
Okay, the first one on the pre-application conference, the wording in the current code, the new code, indicates that the pre-application conference would take place, and there are, the standards were proposed to be in the user's guideline, or the design criteria for the user's guide. This language, what we've proposed, is the current practice, that the standards that we're looking for from the developers are pretty consistent with the language that's in this section. So we're not proposing to codify any, any additional standards other than what we presently use as standards for the pre-application conference. Two, community meetings, the timing of the community meeting presently is before the pre-application conference. We're proposing that it be after the pre-application conference, because sometimes the projects change, and we felt that it was being in the best interest of the community to have a project that was going to go forward and not be changed, so they would have to have another community to look at those changes. The Section 3, the summary of notice table requirements, is simply adjusting the table to reflect in an appeal of an enforcement action that the enforcement action is, that... I'm trying to see what's happening here. The appeal of an enforcement action is to ZIBA, and it's just simply identifying in the table where the appeal would go to. Secondly, in Section 3, the community council notice, we're proposing that there be a community council notice for administrative site plan reviews. There presently is nothing annotated in the table. And third, a new section for street name alterations, as described in Sections 4 and 6 of the staff memo. Section 4, when the new code was adopted, street name changes were, for some reason, left out of the new code, and we've processed a few street name changes in the past year and a half, and that's when it came to our attention that it was left out of the new code. And basically, this is putting the same process and procedure into the new code that presently is in the existing code. Section 5, with posted notices, basically, we're reducing, proposing to reduce the amount of information that is posted on those posters. 6 is the street name alterations, which is mirroring existing code. Section 7, self-storage paving, there's been an issue with respect to ADA requirements, and there are gravel standards that are allowed in self-storage, and the ADA standards won't work with gravel, so we're proposing that the ADA spots be paved. Section 8, outdoor keeping of animals, there's been issues with respect to what is the separation for animals, particularly chickens, and separations from property lines. The original intent was that they be separated from property lines by at least the yard setback, and that's what's being proposed here this evening, because property owners have complained that just with the fence is not appropriate separation between the keeping of chickens between two residential properties, and they should at least be 10 feet back. We concur with that. And Section 9, structured parking, when we had one of the first larger multifamily projects constructed, that Mr. Debenham constructed off of Raspberry, the issue with respect to screening and landscaping, came up with a partially, partial below-ground parking structure. And this amendment clarifies that the separation, the requirements for screening and landscaping do not apply to partially below-grade parking structure, that it has to be fully above-grade. Section 10, exterior lighting, there was a proposed hold in the new code to develop new standards. Those standards are still being worked on, and what we're proposing is a stopgap measure with this language that comes from 2145080 until further work is done on the street lighting standards. And the last section, Section 11, simply talks and eliminates the previous language on how street names are altered, and refers to the new provisions in Section 6. So, kind of broad overview. If you have specific questions, feel free to ask.
Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you. I have two. The first was in the Section 2, the timing of the community meetings. I'm trying to understand the practicality of needing to go to a community meeting before a pre-application meeting. And I put, I see a great deal of value of the pre-application meetings to know that the project that's being contemplated is being interpreted correctly vis-à-vis the code. And, and I, I mean, I would, I would honestly find this to be bad business practice to go out to the community before having a really good sit-down. I mean, this is like sending myself to the slaughter, I think, if, if I don't have, you know, a good conversation with staff. So I'm wondering if you can walk me through the logic.
Mr. Chairman, Madam Chairman, I agree with you. I misread it. I agree with you.
So the change is there shall be at least one community meeting held prior to the pre-application conference and the submittal of an application. And you agree that that statement's problematic as being proposed?
It is problematic, Mr. Chairman. I looked at it quickly. Mr. Potter spoke to me earlier this evening, talking about and/or before or after, giving them the opportunity to choose.
Or if I may, or simply just saying, before the submittal of an application. So, but if, that's good to hear your opinion, Mr. Weaver, on that one, and maybe we'll listen to, if Mr. Potter has comments, too, but I'm glad we're in agreement there. I think it's just common sense. My second one, if I may, the beloved chicken issue, I can't resist. The, so as I read this, if you have less than a 40,000-square-foot lot, and you want to have three non-rooster chickens, three egg-laying chickens, if you will, they have to be at least 10 foot from property line. But I can have how many dogs on a property? Do you know how many actual dogs you can have?
Madam Chair, Mr. Robinson, you can have quite a few dogs if you have a kennel license. They're required to have structured separation, and I believe when they get over three or five, I'm not sure which is the number, requires a structure separated from property line by belief, 10 feet, or the setback of the zoning district.
So, but this had to do with actually, I mean, this isn't just the structure, right? This is, this is sort of a fence within your fence that's being suggested here?
Being suggested that the setback of the zoning district apply.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Spring?
Yes, thank you for clearing that up, Commissioner Robinson, that community council requirement. I was wondering about that myself. And the outdoor keeping of animals. Regarding that, I'm assuming it was prompted by some complaint or another. Do you know how many complaints there were regarding the keeping of chickens adjacent to fences of the neighbors?
Madam Chairman, Mr. Spring, I know there... Madam Chairman, Mr. Spring, I know there was at least one.
So this is based on one complaint that really perhaps the dogs provoked, God forbid, because they were barking at chickens. I doubt if the chickens were barking at the dogs, and I don't think you're allowed to have roosters, so it wasn't a noise issue, it's just that the chickens were irritating the dogs by being there. So I have a problem with it.
Mr. Spring, I don't think it's one, I know of one. Other people, including some Assembly people, have talked about this issue, so it's probably more than one, but I'm only aware of one.
Another question regarding the ZIBA appeals, or the, let's see, I was trying to refer you to the section, and I can't. I just have a note. Is the Assemblymember Dimbowski proposed adding something regarding ZIBA appeals to the ordinance amendment? And now I apologize, I'm trying to...
She indicated that they should be posted as well, Mr. Spring.
That ZIBA appeals should be posted. Can you tell me what, give me an example of a ZIBA appeal that might be posted under this if it's approved, or if it's amended to correspond to the Assemblyperson's suggestion?
Basically, the appeal of an enforcement order goes to ZIBA, and we're just proposing that the table represent the flow of where it goes to.
So this is an enforcement issue, which is, enforcement issues aren't currently So that's something that's kind of a loophole, I guess, or an area which might, which one Assemblyperson has suggested might need to be added.
An appeal would have to be posted, so it, on the noticing requirements, it should be covered under the noticing requirements for appeals, so it should already be in the code, but we'll, you know, I'll look at that, and if that's appropriate to include, we could do that.
I'm just wondering, should we make a recommendation to support that?
Yes.
The Assemblyperson's recommendation, and I don't know.
That's certainly appropriate. I believe it's in there, I believe it's already in the table for the be-posted, but we could certainly look at that and take your recommendation.
Okay. One other question to the Chair. Regarding the paving of self-storage areas to meet ADA, new ADA requirements, it says that, the ordinance change says that it must be, the Class B areas must be paved to the building. Now, when trying to figure out how that would apply or be carried out in reality, it seems to me that you could, if its ordinance is adopted, then the entire surface practically in a self-storage area would have to be paved to meet this requirement.
Madam Chairman, Mr. Spring, basically, you know, the ADA parking's required, it's typically closest to the door, so there would have to be a paved spot and probably a paved sidewalk.
Well, I know my wife's storage unit, which doesn't probably meet any requirements, but they, each storage unit is located outside, you approach it through an alleyway, right? And what are the ADA requirements there? Does each storage unit have to have an ADA requirement?
We haven't looked at that, but the ADA requirements are probably minimal and probably closest to the office, and that's probably where the ADA parking would be located. There would probably be a one or two spots in a storage facility with the walkway.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
I do have one question of staff on this. We have basically 11 sections that we're looking at. Our action tonight is going to be to, A, approve everything, B, make changes, C, any of the above mixture. Could you please give us some direction on what we're supposed to do with this particular case? Thank you.
Madam Chairman, we'd like you to approve the ordinance as proposed with any suggested amendments that you've talked about or believe appropriate to make amendments to what we're proposing.
And you're the only one that's going to present from the city regarding this particular case, so now we need to open it up to the public and who would ever like to speak. If you would like to speak, please give us your first and last name and spell it for us, too, please.
Madam Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tim Potter, for the record, P-O-T-T-E-R. I appreciate that Mr. Robinson brought up item number two, having to do with the timing and number of community meetings. I thought I was either not listening well or not hearing what the staff was saying it said, because it didn't seem to be what was written. And my recommendation would be that it would be modified to read "When Required, There Shall Be At Least One Community Meeting Held Prior to the Submittal of an Application." And the reason I say that is that, as Mr. Robinson indicated, there are some cases that, especially with the code being so new, from especially a multifamily standpoint, those projects are just taking an awful lot of time to meet with the staff and try and go through all the issues associated with it. We've had one recently that is leading to significant changes with the project, and it probably wouldn't have been as productive to go to the community, have a significant redo of the project, and then have the community see something different in the application and wonder what was going on. I think that if what we're looking for, and what I recall the intent was, is that simply the community wanted to be in the loop so that they saw projects before they actually got into the mix and into the process, and I think that this new proposed language would do that. Likewise, it does give the applicant a little bit of flexibility, looking at, when they're scheduling their project program, that looking at the schedule of when the community is meeting, what their agendas are as far as being open or not open, and being able to get onto a set agenda, that you could actually go there first if your project wasn't too complicated, and then that would fit the timing to get the pre-app meeting and then get the application done. So I think it benefits both sides, allows the flexibility, and yet still meets the intent of getting to the public before the process really starts. So with that, I'd be happy to answer your questions.
All right, I don't see any questions, thank you. Commissioner King.
Thank you, through the Chair. Is staff okay with the language that Mr. Potter presented?
Yes, Madam Chairman, Mr. King, we concur.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion. I do need to close the hearing. Thank you. I am closing the hearing for this particular case. And I'm entertaining a motion. And Commissioner Robinson.
Subject to action item 2014-0186, Amendment to AMC Title 21 to amend Sections Relating to Common Procedures, Self-Storage Requirements, Outdoor Keeping of Animals, and Parking Structure Standards, and to add a Street Name Alteration Procedure and Temporary Parking Lot Lighting Regulations. I move that we recommend to the Assembly the adoption of these changes as written with amending in Section Two, under community meetings, timing and number of community meetings, to read "When Required, There Shall Be At Least One Community Meeting Held Prior to the Submittal of an Application."
Do you concur? Commissioner Spohes.
I do, thank you.
And do we have any findings?
Well, if I may, I'm going to support my motion, but I'm also going to recommend an amendment to that motion, if I may, and just sort of float one out separately.
Thank you.
I'd like to amend the section relating to the outdoor keeping of animals to keep the language as currently written, which basically prohibits structures within the setbacks, but allows the animals themselves to be within those setbacks, noting, of course, that they would still have to abide by noise, sanitation, those sorts of things.
I do have one comment regarding that. We are allowed to have sheds in our backyards that could potentially be in the setbacks. That is currently allowed. I'm not sure if that changes in the new Title 21, but you cannot have a shed in your front yard in the setbacks. It has to be a non-temporary structure, so I'm not sure how that would apply. I didn't know if you were aware of that or not.
You know, I am not, and I frankly, you know, obviously, I'm going to support my amendment, I'm interested to hear what other commissioners think. I just, you know, if I had heard that there were, this was a widespread issue, maybe it is, I'd rather, you know, let the Assembly wrestle with it, as if it is in fact. I see a lengthy, you know, letter in here saying, you know, basically what I said, that seems like it's a little bit overkill, but again, that's, you know, I don't know anything about the sheds related, but I think, you know, again, this is just related to the issue of having to create sort of a fence within a fence for something like a couple of chickens.
Thank you, and you have a second from John Spring. And Mr. Spring, do you have a comment?
Are we going to vote on the amendments individually, or can I add an amendment now?
We do need to vote individually on that particular one.
Then I'd like to make an amendment after that.
Okay, so let's go ahead and vote on this particular one from Commissioner Robinson. Use your machines, thank you. And that passes unanimously. And Commissioner Spring, go ahead and begin your motion.
My motion involves Table 21.03-1 on page nine, Appeal of an Enforcement Order. This particular change in the ordinance, it requires that, it deletes the section on Appeal of an Enforcement Order, and I'm responding to the comment by Assemblyperson Dimbowski and regarding the elimination of the posting requirements and other requirements, posting requirements primarily. The, my amendment is to retain the notice requirements for an appeal of an enforcement order, as well as written, mailed notification, and I believe that corresponds to the Assemblyperson's recommendation.
Is that everything you would like to say?
Yeah, I could follow up on that. Enforcement orders are, you know, the reason that there's an enforcement order is probably due to a complaint in a neighborhood by either one individual or multiple individuals. There's, I think we're obligated to allow them to follow through the process on a complaint, a zoning enforcement complaint. If you don't notify, post it, or notify it, and there's a public hearing, they don't have an opportunity to really comment on it, then I think it's probably a good idea. Let them, you know, make a comment on it, and at least to follow the procedure through the end. And it's not the end until you've finished the enforcement, so.
Can I have a second? Is there no second on this? Then the motion dies. Going back to the original motion, or is there any other additional motions people would like to make to this? Nope, no more amendments? Okay, then let's go back to the original case and vote on the original case. And that case passes unanimously. And that closes that case, and on to the next one, which is 2014-0207 from the MOA, an ordinance amending old and new Title 21 to exempt governmental units from posting financial performance and warranty guarantees. Can we have our staff information, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this ordinance proposes an amendment to address issues concerning city, state, and federal government agencies with public funding, which enter into a subdivision agreement where financial performance and warranty guarantees are required. An issue recently came to light when the Anchorage School District initiated a planning action to combine several lots on which the Eagle River High School is located. As a result of that action, the Anchorage School District was required to enter into a subdivision agreement, which required improvements to the school's access road, Yosemite Drive. Section 2108-060 of the new and old code currently requires all subdividers to enter into subdivision agreements that include a requirement to post performance guarantees in the form of escrowed cash, performance bonds, or letters of credit. Setting aside public funds for the purposes of posting performance guarantees only serves to reduce the amount of public funds available for the construction of any given project. There is no known instance, or at least I'm not aware of one, where a governmental unit has failed to meet its performance or warranty obligations such that posting a guarantee is necessary. The governmental unit will still be required to contractually perform and warrant their work. As such, the Municipality of Anchorage and other governmental agencies should not need to post performance guarantees to themselves. All agencies have either had no comment or no objection to this ordinance, the ordinance was routed to community councils, and the council has had no comment, nor have the general public had any comments. So with that being said, the Planning Division would recommend approval of this draft ordinance. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Commissioner King.
Thank you, through the Chair. What, by what means was the general public given the opportunity to give comment on this? Was it posted? By what means?
Through the Chair, Mr. King, the case is advertised on our website, and so that is considered notice. They've had the opportunity to check the website and offer comments if they wanted to.
And if anybody, we're going to open this up for the public. If anybody from the public would like to speak regarding this particular case, please come forward. Is anybody here at all for this case? Well, in that case, we will close the public hearing, and what was the wish of the commission? And Commissioner Spring.
In the matter of case 2014-0207, an ordinance amending old and new sections of Title 21 to exempt governmental units from posting financial performance and warranty guarantees, I move to recommend approval of the ordinance as written.
And I have Commissioner Robinson as a second. Do you have anything you would like to speak to on this motion?
Well, it just seems like a housecleaning issue. I mean, posting entity bond to yourself doesn't really seem to serve any real purpose, and it makes sense to eliminate this requirement.
Commissioner Robinson, do you have anything?
Oh, just that I'm heartened to think that we have full faith in our government at all levels that they will do the right thing.
So that closes that case, and on to the next one. We have case 2014... I'm sorry, oh, yes, we should...
Let's vote.
Let's vote. Okay, everyone vote on this one? Okay, so our, we did vote, and vote is five to one, so the motion passes. And on to our next case, case 2014-0209, the MOA amending the comprehensive plan to add Chester Creek watershed plan review and recommendation to the P&amp;Z Commission in accordance with AMC 21.02... I'm sorry, 21.02... in accordance with AMC 21.02, I'm sorry, 21.03.070. Can I have staff's information, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thee Tobisch, Long Range Planning Division. This plan is a production of the Watershed Management Section in Public Works. As you noted, this is being recommended as an environmental quality section amendment to the section of the comprehensive plan 2101080. This is an important plan for the municipality for two reasons. Mainly, it's an implementation action for policies noted in Anchorage 2020, and it's also a requirement of our federal National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, better known as APDES. We're required to pass approved two watershed plans in our current permit year, permit series. It's a technical plan foremost, it's also a policy plan. Watershed plans typically like this, address water quality and water quantity, water issue planning, and long-range management of the watershed itself, in this case Chester Creek. This is the municipality's second watershed plan. Original plan was a Little Campbell Creek watershed plan adopted in 2008 by the Assembly, similar process. The key elements of this document, Chapter 2 is, as I recall, is goals and objectives for the whole watershed. Chapter 3 is a watershed characterization. Anything you need to know about the watershed from a technical standpoint is there. Chapter 4 is a series of watershed lists, problems, issues. Chapters 5 and 6 are the implementation directives. We met with the commission on a December 1 work session, and the packet tonight includes some recommendations to address some of the concerns we heard from the commission at the work session. We did send the plan out on public notice to affected community councils and to the standard distribution list. I think we, I recall seven agency responses and response from DOT, as well as J-Bear. And as I said, the packet includes recommendations in addition to address concerns of the commission. Department recommends approval of the plan with the series of items that, I think it's page 3 of your packet, is considered to be recommendations from staff. I also have here the author of the plan, Sherry Northern, from the Anchorage Waterways Council, and Kristi Bischoff Berger from Watershed Management is here as well to answer technical questions.
Yes, I really have no real comment on the, or recommendations for changes of the plan. I think it's really well done. I really appreciate, I wanted to just comment that I appreciate the changes you made in response to the, excuse me, the work session that we had, particularly the new table that includes priorities for the plan. I think that's really helpful. And I know it's, you can't make really detailed cost estimates, but I do think I appreciate the, kind of the categorization of the cost, you know, the scale anyway is indicated in that, and I think that's sufficient for this case. And then the addition of the lead agencies. I might quibble about some of the lead agencies. Sometimes you identify the MOA, and then sometimes you identify specific departments, but I think it's, in general, I think it does a good job of giving direction to the implementation of the plan, much better than the previous version, and I appreciate you listening to our comments.
Commissioner Robinson?
Thank you. I had a question on, under plan implementation, I have page 57 of the plan, a couple items, but in particular, 2.6, reduce the amount of existing and proposed impervious surface within the watershed by way of LID, which I think is low-impact development, is that right? And set thresholds priorities. I wonder if you could enlighten the commission on, you know, what are the, what you feel are the sort of follow-up or implementations to that action?
Low-impact development is part of the APDES permit. That is one of the requirements that the municipality has to follow, and things like that would include swales, areas that would capture water and let it infiltrate back into the ground, replace some vegetation, use surfaces that are, in places where they need to have a pervious surface, there are different types of materials that you can use, even some sort of paving that will absorb water, green roofs, rain barrels, rain gardens, there are a whole series of things. And it is part of the mandate of the permit.
So I'm glad you mentioned that, because I know at least one developer that proposed using pervious pavement in an attempt to sort of reduce their, you know, onsite stormwater requirements, and they were frankly denied the ability to reduce the traditional methods of planning for storm from the municipality. So in other words, they could put it in, but it was of no benefit to them because they still had to do all of the same other things. And I, I just, I guess, my point is, it's a, it's a two-way, you know, two-way street here. I'm not sure how this ultimately gets enforced, whether this is, you know, something that gets codified at some point or not, but I think, you know, I'm all for it. These are also some practices that can actually reduce costs to developers as well, but they have to be embraced by the permitting agency, too. So we're kind of in a, you know, catch 22. Just a, just a comment there, I don't know if you have any, have had any feedback on those sorts of things or not?
That's not really my area, and actually, I think Kristi would be better to speak to that since it's her department.
Thank you.
And they have their criteria for stormwater plans.
Mr. Robinson, pardon me. We're working on getting going on alternative compliance in Title 21. It is, it's already in the new Title 21, I couldn't tell you exactly what section. Looking for ways to help developers deal with conflicting requirements within the chapter itself, and we're looking forward to working with developers on a case-by-case basis, looking for ways to implement low-impact development and still keep their costs down and get all of their other requirements met satisfactorily.
And if I may, when you say, you know, you say "we," you mean your department, it's sort of an internal effort, or what's, what exactly is the process there?
Well, it'll be my, my division, my section specifically.
Great, thank you. Another, one last question, if I may. I think the last time when we had the work session, I probably, you know, sort of drizzled on about the issue of floodplains, and I, particularly in this watershed, we're working on a project that, it's very clear that the FEMA maps are, you know, are far outdated, and the issues, you know, that we were dealing with would have required a lot more, you know, a scope way beyond our project to sort of deal with it. And I, I couldn't quite make the connection, if there is one, between this effort, you know, and ultimately, you know, getting to something where, you know, it strikes me that if we're trying to protect a resource, then we have to have better data today than what is contained in a lot of those maps. And if that's true, then is there not a way to use the technical knowledge that we've gained to somehow, somehow, some way, go back and look at maps that can then be a benefit to both the public and private sector as they engage in projects? You know, we all know that it's incredibly frustrating to deal with something on the map when someone, you know, in the muni even says, "Well, I know, you know, you know it's wrong, but you just got to do it anyway." So is there no, is there no potential, you know, Thee started off by saying it's a technical, you know, report, it's a policy report. Is there no way to sort of use what we know here to help change that?
Well, I don't know that I see this document as being related to the FEMA issue. I agree with you, the FEMA maps need to be redone, and the thing standing between us and getting that done, of course, is funding, and that's something that perhaps we could get a team together on to resolve and prioritize for the municipality. There are a number of projects, particularly on Chester Creek, that are suffering from poor mapping.
Yeah, I mean, it's costly. I mean, the one I, the connection I made was 2.7, preserve and/or maintain wetlands within the floodplain for attenuation of peak flows. So, you know, just reading out, if I were to sort of guess that, you know, if there were, you know, some charge to maintain a wetland that wasn't exactly supporting a real floodplain, I mean, you know, see, I'm just sort, maybe I've gotten paranoid, but I guess I appreciate your response, and I think the answer that I get is, there's not really a connection, but if there, if there were to be one through efforts like this, I think it would go to solving a lot of problems.
Okay, I'll keep it in mind.
Madam Chair, can I just tack on to that? We did, this is a systematic problem, it's not just Chester Creek, and the federal program is a mapping program. While we do understand that, especially in Chester Creek, we know there's incorrect mapping, and the response to, or the resolution to that's not simple and costly, but we did add something, number one in the new table, was trying to get at this systematic issue. I don't know that it does completely, but that was our attempt.
The new table in the, that's provided in the packet, that's the one you're referring to?
Yes, Table 6.1.
So just the action to conduct the floodm, okay. So at least it's in there? Who knows if it ever gets funded or done? My presumption is no, but, but thank you for at least putting it in there.
I do have one comment. JABER did send in a three-page letter, pages 7, 8, and 9 in the packet. They do bring up quite a few issues. Were they contacted through this process? They kind of make it seem like they have a lot of really important things to say, and I just want to make sure that all of their stuff is addressed before this particular plan is published.
JABER did have representatives on the roundtable that was working to create the action plan, beginning around 2010, 11, 12. The person who was attending eventually got pregnant and left, so their representation sort of tapered off a little bit. I was surprised when I saw the number of comments, and I, and you can tell that they really scrutinized it very carefully, particularly the misspelling of Almondorf, the first thing that I saw, and I felt bad about that, but I think they had some good points. Kristi and I have talked about this a little bit, because they, there is a plan on the base, and there seems to be concern on their part on where their stuff stops and starts and ours, and, you know, should we integrate them, or, well, we're not, they don't want us saying their problems on base, and I think we're pretty much sticking to off JABER's area because they do have a plan.
Yeah, I could just add on, the comments were well-taken, for sure. They came in beyond our deadline, so we didn't have the chance to do a formal response in the packet, but we did add on clearly that it's our intent to incorporate all the technical issues they represented as best we can in the final document. They'll be reflected.
So at this time, we do have a document in front of us that we're supposed to vote on, so should we go ahead and table this until those additional comments can be put into this plan?
Madam Chair, I don't think so. None of them are serious policy issues or significant stumbling blocks. As I read it, they're mostly technical clarifications, it's things like that.
Thank you. Okay, we'll open this particular session up to the public, and whoever would like to come forward and speak on this case.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, my name is Tim Potter with DOWL, last name P-O-T-T-E-R. First off, I really want to applaud everybody involved in this. You know, the key to real good planning is really to look how gravity works, and that means you should do your planning around drainage basins. That's how it should be done. Unfortunately, we didn't start that way in Anchorage necessarily, and this is an approach to try and catch up and address it. I had very few specific questions that I believe that staff and the preparers of the report can respond to quickly and clearly. Part of it has to do with implementation and how that will be done, and one of the items on page 12 is an interesting comment about a specific location having to do with water quantity, and it's specifically about return Chester Creek to a more natural hydrologic scheme. And then when you go to the objective, where it says, "and/or widen existing floodplains where necessary," I'm assuming that they're specifically suggesting changing the structure of the stream itself so that the area to be, that would, that you'd actually create floodplains, you're not necessarily going to suggest that the floodplain lines that FEMA has now are just going to mysteriously get bigger. It's actually physically changing the structure of the creek to incorporate floodplain construction.
Well, I'm, I can't speak to the floodplain part, but I do know that we walked the creek and took extensive notes and looked at areas of, you have been around long enough to know Chester Creek has been dramatically altered and straightened.
Right, because there's, as I see it, and read it, there's two specific floodplains. One is the actual structure of the floodplain in the field, and the other one is typically a FEMA elevation that suggests that that's where the edge of the floodplain is, and I just want to make sure we're not mysteriously changing that FEMA line, and we're actually going to change the structure of the stream to incorporate floodplain characteristics in the channel itself. A second item had to do with, there's language that says "protect private wetlands," and I guess I'd like some clarification of what "protect" means. How would that be implemented?
Well, there are conservation easements and things like that. Great Land Trust is one of the partners that does go in and work with private wetlands, I think.
Because here I go with my white hair, in the good old days, the Heritage Land Bank actually had a fund for acquisition of preservation of wetlands, which would be Class A wetlands on the maps now. And when you did a subdivision, you would have to basically plot out those A wetlands, and there was a fund that the city had to acquire based on appraised value, those wetlands. And I wish we were back in those days. It was a good way to do it. Boy, I think that really, really covers it, but looking at this document and going through it in a lot of detail, it'll be interesting to see how it actually gets implemented. Oh, I did have one more. When you have specific references to a, like a car's grocery store parking lot, and suggest that there be some changes made to it, how do you envision that that will be implemented? Strictly voluntary, so at some point in the future, if they come in for a remodeling permit for the building, there won't be an imposition of that specific thing as far as redoing their parking lot and those kinds of things. That's just what I'm trying to get at.
There'd be a suggestion, and then whatever hoops they would have to jump through from the Title 21 perspective, but then we might have some grant funds to ante up to encourage them to put in some LID, but it will be strictly voluntary.
I love that encouragement, that would be good to see. With that, support the document 99.9%, and I'm glad that this piece of work is finally to the point where it's come forward to you and going on to the Assembly. Thank you.
And what is the, is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak tonight? Looks pretty quiet, so I, closing the So I'm closing the public hearing, and what is the wish of the commission? Commissioner Spring?
In the case, in the matter of case number 2014-0209, regarding the mending of the comprehensive plan to add Chester Creek watershed plan, I move that the commission recommend approval of the plan as a, as an element of the comprehensive plan to the municipal assembly, with the four amendments listed on Page 3 identified by the staff.
And that was seconded by Commissioner Cange. And Commissioner Spring, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. Several findings involving the, plan meets and furthers the goals and intent of the comprehensive plan, excuse me, and fulfills Anchorage's APDES permit conditions. And moreover, in the larger sense, I think this is a tremendous, Chester Creek is a tremendous resource for the municipality of Anchorage and its citizens, and well-used and loved by everyone, and just so happens to go by my neighborhood, and I, I see the problems there. There are multiple problems in that watershed that probably should have been addressed better in the past, and I think the plan will make tremendous strides if, if the money's available to implement it and greatly improve the water quality and flow, the natural flow of the stream, and be something people can enjoy for generations.
Commissioner Cange, do you have anything you would like to speak to?
I'd also like to point out that the approval of this is supported by staff and also supported by public testimony here this evening, and I'd just like to add those two items to the findings. Thank you.
Let's go ahead and use our machines and vote. And that motion carries unanimously. So that closes that case, and on to the next one, which will be 2014-0215, MOA Planning Department, Amendment to Title 21 Old Code to direct appeals to ZIBA to be filed with the Planning Division rather than the Clerk's Office, AMC 21.30.130. And can I have staff's presentation, please?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, this is a very minor amendment to the code that clarifies, corrects the present process for appeals from ZIBA to the Clerk's Office and redirects it to the Planning Division, which is where it's processed. Basically, today, they're filed with the Clerk's Office, and the Clerk's Office refers it over to the department, and the department processes it. So this takes an unnecessary step out of that loop.
And I open it up to the public, but it doesn't appear that any public is here, so is there any questions from the commission? And can I have a motion from the commission? I'm sorry, I need to close the public hearing, I apologize. And a motion from the commission would be wonderful. Okay, Commissioner Cange?
Thank you, the chair. I'm ahead of myself. In regard to case 2014-0215, an amendment to Title 21 to direct appeals to ZIBA be, to be filed with the Planning Division rather than the Clerk's Office, I move to adopt this.
Okay, that was seconded by Commissioner Walker. Do you have any comments?
I tend to support this motion. I believe it's in the best interest of the community. It's supported by our staff report and various municipal codes, particularly Section 21-30-130.
Thank you, and it looks like that is over, and does anybody have any comments? Do we want to vote? Yes, do we need to vote? We do need to vote. Okay, let's all vote. And it passes unanimously. Okay, any comments tonight? Anybody have anything to say?
Move to adjourn.
Nope. Okay, move to adjourn. Thank you. And a second? Brandon Sporkeys and Tony Cange.
I'd just like to say that the vice chair did a wonderful job. Who is chair for the first time?
Bravo.